I've got six, five, I'm on this meeting to order for favor business is the pledge of allegiance.
I have played with the United States of America.
Okay, got some meeting minutes to approve, um, look for a motion to approve the regular session minutes of June the sixteenth. Second, uh, you weren't here, were you on sixteen?
Yes.
You were? Okay. All favor? I.
Alright, yeah. Yes, all in favor?
The twentieth and tomorrow.
Alright, um, looking for a motion to approve the special session minutes of June the twentieth.
I'm there, yes.
Yes, it's the twenty seventh. Uh, I'll second vote, yes.
Yes.
Uh, and then a motion to approve the special session minutes of June the twenty seventh.
Second.
Uh, you'll make motion?
I'll make the.
I'll second vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm saying.
Okay, uh, public comment period, Frank County Sheriff's Office.
Uh, just a quick update, the comm center is coming along at nine hundred North Edge. Uh, I don't know when it's supposed to be done, but I did hear it was on schedule, so, um. And then, uh, I think our bomb team set up about fifty thousand fireworks that confiscated on Saturday, so.
You set them off?
No, I didn't, the bomb team, I'm not, I'm colorblind.
So what does that look?
I think greens wouldn't do it either.
So what does that look like when that, do they set them off all at once or?
Uh, they set them off at the quarry down on, uh, in Hamilton Township right by behind, uh, the Racino.
Yeah.
So, it was like their own personal fireworks supplier, actually the fire marshal confiscated them and our bomb team usually drives up to Belmont County, but. To save time, they just decided to set them off when they're given permission of the quarry, so. So that's, that's kind of our update, uh, our therapy canines are ready to go.
Therapy came, they were getting their pictures taken today, so.
There's an idea for a chief.
I need a therapy.
No. No.
Uh, that's pretty much it, and Sheriff's Office, uh, uh, red, white and blue went off pretty well tomorrow, and I can't speak for CBD, but.
Uh, Brookside.
Uh, thank you for the support, they've been bringing the back the bike parade and. Other than that, nothing new to report, they've, uh, not holding meetings during the summer.
Uh, where in Houston Hills? Uh, thank the police department, the fire department and road crew for everything they did on July the fourth, as well as the three other days that. Uh, went around that, and I know they're not here, obviously, but I want to thank the Worthen City School District. For allowing us to use their facilities and being patient with the needy trustee all the time, calling, so. Um, but, thank you to everybody, it was a great, great week, uh, great weekend, so. Uh, Epcun, Ravello. We have a couple items on you to lay down, uh, for Epcun, Ravello.
Okay.
Um, oh, one more, one more thing, chief, I'm sorry, uh, civic association meeting this Wednesday is canceled.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, Charlie should probably know that, but it would be good to reinforce it.
Hey, uh, Zoe.
Um, everything's pretty good, within one exception, a resolution to declare fifty-six twenty-two Riverside Drive Dublin a nuisance.
Uh, I'll make the motion to declare fifty-six twenty-two Riverside Drive in Dublin, Ohio a nuisance. Are you gonna vote?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Road Department.
Uh, under old business, I have facilities parking lots on there, if you want to discuss that at all still. It's not the, uh, twenty twenty-five road improvements, I don't have enough data, I've reached out to Mark Molyneux. To, uh, see if there's a start date yet, um. He was last I heard trying to get ahold of Shelly to find something out on that. Uh, Aqua is gonna be starting the Tennesse, uh, Port Waterline project, would be as soon as this week. Uh, I'm still waiting on their application for the right of way permit, uh, the plans for Tennesse and Port has been. They've been approved, uh. Mission Hills and St. Louis Hills, we're still waiting on them to do some updates, uh, to get a sign off on the county.
What do we need for Tennesse and Port?
Uh, the county's requested they do, they change some of the wording on the, uh, the standard drawings they've got in the plans.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they've referenced Columbus, they want them to reference Franklin County's.
Okay.
Um.
But any, I'm sorry, we had to give them a right of way.
We'll give them a right of way, DLC will apply for the right of way permit as soon as those are signed up on.
Okay.
Stinging Hills, they, and Mission Hills, they will be required to get a bond. Um, for that one. Tennesse, it's a directional board four hundred feet, real similar to what they did on Pete's Court. That's all I have for, uh, the Aqua facility roofs, I've. The maintenance folder has had, has all the quotes, I've received seven estimates to have them reached replaced. Ranging from sixty-two thousand up to ninety-four, uh, iron horse, or, yeah, iron horse. And, and though, they have a best option, which I didn't include on the spreadsheet there, little breakdown. I tried to keep it out because the apples, so I went with their middle line. Singles they will provide in there.
So, but you, we've worked with Abels, right?
We've worked with Newman, I've never worked with Abels.
Okay.
Newman has done a lot of the repairs. Previous repairs on our building, uh. I did provide a shingle comparison kinda in that folder to break down. Uh, and I asked, talked to the other contractors about the Cambridge. Uh, they all say it's still pretty good, more cost effective, but still a very good shingle.
Is that the reason why they're so much lower than like integrity and, and, uh, these?
Uh, I'm assuming that's the reason, when, when you look at the comparison, it is a, you know. The lower cost point for that shingle. All the work, the warranties are very similar to all the other estimates.
The mold treatment.
Oh, that's. Six-one-four said they included, there's a, it's basically a beach bleach spray, a fifty-fifty bleach spray that they spray on the, uh, trusses. A lot of the, the mold that's growing on the plywood will be removed, uh, and replaced when they replace that wood. Then, six-one-four would treat the trusses and, and any raptors where they see mold. Um. Iron horse and contractors saying, when I asked them about it, uh. They don't do it, but they suggested that once, when they have that area open, that we go up with a sprayer and just spray those trusses ourselves. Um, I called. Service Pro to get an estimate, they asked them to come out to just look at it and give me an estimate of how much it, it would treat, um. They suggested that I wait till the roof is replaced, uh, because they changed the scope of work. On their estimate when that roof is done, because that, all that plywood will be replaced. They would prefer to come in after the roof is done. Search Pro, they're, they do mold treatments.
So how many, how many sheets are they looking to replace, science?
Uh, six-one-four has estimated twenty-seven is what's needed on building one and two. Uh, there was nothing seen that was needed on building three, um, the other ones. They. Didn't give a number, uh, that that could change when they pull it off and.
Didn't give a number as in anything that they had to do would be added extra?
It will be, that's the sixty-five dollars per sheet, sixty, seventy-five. Uh, there will be sheets that need replacement, they just didn't wanna put a number down, uh, walking it off in case that number rose.
So, and what, uh, ranking, is it like building two, building one, building three in terms of need of, need to repair?
Building, building two is in, in need for some supply.
Yeah.
Uh, building one here, it has signs of water damage back here on the back corner. There's actually a leak right now, uh, we tried to fix last week, I went in there a little while ago, it's still leaking. Um, and then, there is a dip in the peak. Here where it looks like two trusses had dropped, causing a dip on this roof, uh. No signs of leaking where it's at, there's just. It's the dip of the plywood right on the, uh, the beat.
Well, kind of, and, and as Pinnacle Pristine, would you say it goes? GAF, like, how would you rank the shingles, GAF, landmark, pinnacle, Cambridge? Because where I'm getting at is, if, if six-one-four exterior is, is included the. Bleach spray, they've included the twenty-seven, um, sheets plywood. Um. You know, they pretty much have everything in the Pinnacle Pristine, they're at seventy-six, three, sixty-three.
And they, they are, six-one-four is offering a two thousand dollar discount if we did all three buildings. Uh. On there as well, but. The warranty, from what I've looked at the Pinnacle Pristine, uh. It seems to be one of the top tier warranties, uh, with the replacement, uh. The algae resistant.
Hmm.
And then they offer a ten-year workmanship warranty. Oh.
That's a no-brainer.
They've also offered, there's a chimney on building one, they will, uh. There's some cracks on the concrete, they'll replace it, well, repair it, not replace it, while they're here to do that as well. And that's written down in the estimate, the little extras that they're offering to do.
So if we win with, um. At, ha, from a, from a budgeting standpoint, what, is that a? I mean, I, I guess. Do we have the money to do all three here, do we just do building two? And then do the, you know, have them hold the price for?
I think, I think we would probably wanna look at one and two. And hold off on three until we decide whether there's going to be an addition or an expansion or. Raising of that building and replacing, you know, we, again, at some point, we have to, in a very near future, address. Buildings three's need for a women's locker room. And how we're gonna do that, are we gonna do an addition to facilitate that? No sense putting a roof on there and then coming back and adding something to it. And then trying to tie it all together, I would just hold off, that roof is not leaking, it's in the best shape of the three roofs. I would just let it ride.
So one and two?
One and two, right now, I think one and two are the two buildings that show, and, and right here. Irons folks have fixed this leak pretty well, so that's not a problem anymore, but there is still a leak here.
So, is the assumption that we would be allocating the, uh, costs to each? Or like general funds would pick up, building one, road would do building two? In terms of allocation in the budget, Andy, is that where you're looking? Fine.
So. So if we did one and two, we're under seventy-five thousand.
We're, we need to see one and four, twenty-one, ninety-five.
You okay with six-one-four?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think they're doing everything.
So, how about, I'm gonna make a motion, um, that we authorize. Expenditure of funds associated with replacement of the roof, excuse me. Do I need to award the contract first, or does it matter?
I mean, are, I don't know, have they submitted, they've submitted a quote, correct?
Yes, yeah.
That quote is gonna be under seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
So, I'm assuming they're gonna provide some sort of contract? So.
Just make a motion to award the.
Well, so I, I would basically just provide instructions to have. Authorized, authorized, we want them to reach out to get, to get a contract, yeah.
Okay.
For buildings one and two, not to exceed seventy-five thousand.
Well, actually, not to exceed.
Not thirty-sixty. Sixty-one thousand, four, twenty-one, ninety-five.
Yeah.
What was it, sixty-one?
How about sixty-two thousand?
How about sixty-two thousand?
Okay. Um, I move to authorize, um, expenditure of not to exceed sixty-two thousand for replacement of roofs for building one and two. And authorize entering into a contract with six-one-four exteriors to do that network.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh.
And I am, the spreadsheet is beautiful.
Love it.
Beautiful.
He really does love his spreadsheets.
Beautiful.
We all have a hobby.
Uh, um, what's the witty tree trimming? On my agenda, there's a map to kinda show the trees that are supposed to be trimmed and one, uh, removed. It's five behind the buildings, uh, and then one out by the fuel tank. I did, uh, Columbus Tree did come out and give an estimate, uh, on the estimate that's in the folder, they included sales tax, uh. I, I talked to them about that, they know that it's tax exempt, uh, we would be at three thousand dollars with Columbus Tree. To have all of these trees removed, end of October, first of Nov- November.
I'm seeing the, end of November.
Beginning of November, end of October, beginning of November.
Okay.
Uh, with that, we don't, with them trimming that way, we don't need to worry about the oak will.
Yeah.
Option, uh.
Don't worry about oak will, first.
His hobby.
Yeah, with all these being oak trees, they don't recommend trimming until fall.
Right.
Late fall.
Columbus Tree Service.
I would like the approval to.
Okay.
Contract.
Mister Chair, I move to authorize, um, the road superintendent to, uh, engage with Columbus Tree Service to. Remove or trim, uh, those trees identified within the map before the board. And not to exceed at a cost of thirty-five hundred dollars. I'll give you a little cushion.
Thank you.
Second, vote?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, fine. Good recommendation. It's serious.
I don't know if they're coming to the meeting or if they need some help.
Uh. Epcun, Ravello, no parking. Uh, we do have a revolution. Limited overall resolution one twenty-eight dash twenty-two, uh. I think it was voted on for two thousand eighteen, uh, they included no, no parking in phase one of Epcun. Uh, we do not have. In that, in that resolution, phase two of, uh, Epcun, the courtyard's landing, and Ravello are not included in that resolution. With no parking, uh, and then I made a list on the back, on my agenda. I don't know how we enforce the no parking on Candlewood Drive. Those signs have been up there for as long as I can remember, I don't know if those need to be included as well. And I spoke to the county about no parking on Circle on the Green, if you wanted to make. One side of no park, of Circle on the Green, no parking, uh, there's no, nothing stopping us from.
We chose to put the signs.
We have to put the signs and. One side.
Yeah, we're talking about kind of well.
Well, Mr. Rupert, I've asked meeting, asked about no parking on, uh, Circle on the Green, if that was a possibility.
We got, sure, a lot of people parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah, but you don't want a bunch of signs.
No, I don't think you want a bunch of signs, but I just, I, I, I just will take a fire cup, they would get through. It's.
If they park the whole side.
Yeah, that is why we put no parking on the Fourth of July, for basically safety purposes, we. We collect. We buy no parking, that way it's not, it does have to stand there.
Right. But that's a temporary.
That's temporary, but it just seems like the narrowest street. Only because it doesn't use.
Well, it doesn't contain.
I don't know how you get around.
What's that?
I don't know how you get around without posting sign.
Oh, we would need signs, it needs to be posted. The spacing is, we can determine the spacing, but each side. In between, you have to be visible on the next one. But if you look at Candlewood Drive, that's what it would look like. Black post with the, the no parking, which, it doesn't look terrible. Just a lot of stuff.
Could build a big billboard as you're entering into service, right, that says no parking on the service side. It's a thought.
I don't think that suffices as far as.
Typically, those things are controlled by the uniform.
Yeah, I talked to Mike and Draco.
Traffic control manual, yeah, so.
The only thing in the traffic manual is the, the angle that they have to be facing the road, there's nothing really on the spacing. It's more about the side distance.
But this is a cul-de-sac, we're talking about.
Circle, so search as the circle, you come in, come out.
Yeah. There, I'm pretty sure that there is an attorney general opinion. That states when you have one access point, that I think if they determined you could post at the entrance. That would be ideal, I, I.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be very easy to find, I can.
Okay.
Test it off, send it, send it over, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and actually, I think we looked at this issue for you guys. Long time ago.
Is it something that needs to be socialized with the neighbors or?
But you have to these.
Which, I would just like to know what the options are, I don't think people would want all kinds of signs of. Um. I know two neighbors that would probably say. They would probably be single, I haven't given up, but. Yeah, they've got six cars and they park. Two and two on either side of the road, again, I saw a runk truck.
Yeah, I bet.
What is, you know, I mean, this engine, 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 that close to both cars. I don't know, I don't know if they, I'm with EMS vehicle, I mean, a fire truck seems to be. Well, there's a lot of them.
Side of the road you do, how is it decided?
We could decide which other street.
There's no like.
I think you pick the outside, well, because that's bigger. It was definitely wider on the outside than the inside.
Yeah, you definitely never get a hood ladder around that, third, no.
And I think we have other streets that are, that's what I was, we were discussing, it's like, actually, there's other streets, huh?
In the Jordan, in our streets of Wilmington Hills with the.
Yeah.
With the parking, we run into this issue all the time when we're plowing.
Yeah.
We've had to back out of some streets, so we can't get a browse started.
It's designed, I mean, obviously, Columbia's wide, and, you know, all that, these side streets.
Right.
Ours just seems particularly, maybe because it's sort of a giant.
Was that all the sack of what was that number of the year resolution?
But Pete made me look at the options, I think we could put that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost, I'm almost positive, yeah.
One twenty-eight.
But there's one entrance, I think, maybe he said he's opposed to.
I think you can do that for speed limits. Yeah, because everybody drives past that sign.
And then speeds up.
You get on the street.
I mean, I, I'm not a cop, except for on Halloween, but, uh, I, I, I think. You don't need, I mean, even if it's not posted, isn't there like default provisions? With respect to residential streets and. Enforcement.
If there is, um, if there's no way for emergency equipment to get through, the, what makes it tough is if there's cars parked on both sides. Who do you, who do you?
I meant like speed limits, like. Default, speed limits.
Uh, well, residential is your twenty-five, I mean, that's just a, yeah.
Okay. But yeah, no, I think, I think we can give you some options.
I, I'm sorry, it's outside, so are we talking about Ravello and Epcun?
Well, this kind of. Yeah.
A long weekend.
Why do you get past the email?
Yeah, but whatever you decide.
Yeah.
And you need to list the streets out.
Uh, what time on now? Yeah, are we passing up? I'm sorry.
Uh, well, do you wanna add four yards pace two, we'd have to come back if we wanted to, uh. Talk about adding no parking to Circle on the Green, we'd have to revisit that if we. Voted on.
Well, let me ask you this, the citation, the Home Rule Resolution that, uh, that just popped up. So, amending the resolution one twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
I'd just do a new resolution.
Huh?
I would just do a new resolution.
Okay, so you're gonna come back?
I think, yeah, for Ravello and phase two.
Yeah.
I think you just come back with a new resolution.
Okay.
For phase two and Ravello.
Okay, gotcha. So what we're gonna do with Circle on the Green?
Well, I think that depends on, I'm gonna get the AG opinion.
It'll depend upon whether we can put on signs or.
Put it at the entrance.
Maybe a big time for real one, yeah.
That would be, that would be a deal. They have.
Right, right. Yeah, but I, I almost wanna measure this. So it does only work, it, it truly is a same issue, and the thing is too. We had two call, we have a, we have a quadriplegic on the street, they, they had two calls in the last month. Two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And he's got some serious health issues, if something else happened, yeah, I, you just wanna make sure. There's no other way to get to the.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, it's a one entrance place, right?
Yeah.
But if you just measure the street with a, a card on each side, now why is a fire truck or whatever to say you can't get through there?
Yeah.
A snowplow can't get through there.
Well, we know how wide the street is.
Yeah.
Generally know how wide his car is.
Yeah.
We could look at the, uh, the radius.
Okay.
That's required to, um, for fire by hands and the width. So I'll come back to that.
Yep.
Uh. Voted on. The right of way criteria? Did you ever discuss that?
Yeah, so, uh, we've had a conversation with Pete, this gets back to our, uh, review of right of way permits. Um, we have talked about a number of options, one of which was developing devil strips. Uh, which the county engineer was now less inclined to do, um, for us. And therefore, that's not a route that I don't think is feasible, but I think that we can tighten up our. Right of way permit criteria, the renewed criteria for granting a permit. And so there's, there was a couple townships out there, uh, I think Jefferson, Prairie, and there was maybe a third one. Uh, that we asked Pete to kinda look at, to see if we can't make it, um. More strict, say that, in our favor, um, and so that's, we wanna come back to you with. Set a criteria for you to look at to determine whether or not that you find that to be acceptable or not, the process.
Pete, what's that look like, like wording wise?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I was hoping to get to it before tonight, but I just.
Okay.
Ran out, I mean, ran out of time.
Yes.
But I understand the, uh, purpose and what we're trying to accomplish, so.
You think we can have some for the twenty-first?
Yeah.
As well, okay, as well as parking.
Yeah. I will be here on the twenty-third, but I'll. I'll make sure that we have direction.
Okay.
It's a pretty drink somewhere.
It's unnecessary. Not only will I not be here, but. I will be doing something better.
Anything on the sidewalk policy? Where are we with sidewalk policy?
Um.
Is that different on the MOU?
Yeah, I didn't know, we were supposed to be looking at the sidewalk policy, I was just working on the MOU.
Yes, so we need, we do need to revise the sidewalk policy because it serves as the basis. In what we're attempting to do with the sidewalks over in Brookside as well as where the town tells, but.
I I mean, I would. I mean, there's plenty of um. Examples online from any type of municipality or. In terms of repair.
Our own draft, but I'm not sure that this included that our draft.
We have a current draft?
We had a draft, did we not? We might make this up.
I I'd have to look, I can't remember, I thought there was something a long time ago and then.
There was, I recall there a draft being socialized regarding. If folks were trying, if residents were trying to petition to get sidewalks, is that what you're?
Yes, part of that had to do with the sidewalk policy.
So I think you have two things, I think one, you have what your review criteria as a board is going to be when residents petition. The second. Or is you're actually sidewalk standards. You know, in terms of. Destruction. Maintenance and repair. And. There's, there there should be, at least with respect to that second component, there, yeah. Go on any municipality website and they're gonna have their criteria of when the sidewalk needs to be um repaired. But I'm I'm happy to. See if we have anything that you you we've prepared for you in the past.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, here, here, so we have three items.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're in the office, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Okay. I'm gonna set, I'm gonna set a meeting up with I. And and achieve.
I'll leave you try to, try to identify, try to identify some. Documents that we get prepared for a meeting with you next week.
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
So my hope is on the twenty first, before I actually have something in front of them.
Yeah.
To start looking at. My apologies.
Apologies necessary. All right.
Once we get through that policy, Pete, will the MOU with the schools be also something we'll be able to talk about at the twenty first meeting or that?
Well, I think you have that, that's one thing.
That's one thing to hear.
I mean, that's fairly standalone, isn't it?
That's a little bit different and with respect to um, because we're gonna own the sidewalks. Now, whatever maintenance standards we adopt, I would suspect we would. Follow for sidewalks, that would seem to make sense, but. Tim probably knows more about liability and those type of things, but but yeah, um. But I I I think I have the, uh, and so we did, I decided not to do it as an MOU, but more as a shared services agreement. Under the statute, because I think that also allows uh, for. Everybody involved in the the safer route program to claim immunity, to claim immunity.
Okay.
So that's why I set it up under the shared service statute.
Okay.
But you have, you have that. For the board's consideration tonight.
First of all, sorry.
I have to do.
It's probably fine.
Yeah, I wasn't seeing it, was it?
Yeah, it's on the uh, on the drop box.
Yeah. Seen it, so.
Service.
You sent that to me, Pete?
It's a service break.
Yeah. And check.
Yeah, it was a rough weekend. How about?
We're coming.
Yeah.
Maybe a few that aren't pretty too, Michelle, but. That remains to be seen.
Well. We're at the twenty first.
Yeah.
Right.
So that, just so, just so you know, that's a shared service agreement that basically provides that the uh, safe route. Sidewalks, uh, the township is going to be. Responsible for the overall, what I'm gonna call general maintenance and repair. Identify as both uh, that's provided by the engineer. Of of the routes. And the school district is going to be responsible for snow and ice removal. Uh, I did include a indemnification provision. Um. On behalf of the township to the school district, but only up to an amount that set forth in whatever applicable. Policies are, if we can't provide a complete indemnification anyway. So. Um, but like I said, one of the reasons I did the shared sort of statute is. Um. Yeah. Whenever you're exercising your governmental authorities or governmental functions, you would have the ability to claim immunity anyway, but so. I think it's pretty straightforward stuff, um. But yeah, look at it.
So the statement ten is the one that holds them, holds the school district harmless up to the limit. Right.
Otherwise, our sidewalks, we take care of them, except for snow and ice removal, but we're gonna do that.
We repair, replace.
Correct. Right, and they're, they do the snow and ice removal on their own dime.
And I'm sorry, they've at least in concept agreed to all of the portions that are being placed.
All the portions that are on the map. This this brown and state brown.
Right, right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
It was not.
I mean, in in concept, they've agreed to that, I think. Think the concern is when you get off of. When you're in front of Brookside School, and you go either right or left. That's the easy part.
Right.
When you cross the street. That's the harder part. I think. It didn't seem to have too much of a concern about it, but I, just in the back of my mind, I got to thinking. Kind of off school property. In that way. I mean, you are, if you get too far to the right or left, but. Still, you're on the same side of the street.
It's not adjacent, or I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they do have the equipment necessary, they have staff to do it, they're gonna do it anyways. It's just walking further on down the cycle.
A little walk, a stroll.
Or drive, drive. Any thoughts, Mr. Rover? Well, I mean, we're, as as a government entity, we're. Covered anyway, right, I mean, can we not have?
Well, yeah. I mean, it's a typical sidewalk. Ability case, I mean, but yeah, I mean, we. We're allowed to.
So Sue Jones walks down the sidewalk and. Trips.
Why have insurance?
But there's still.
There's still all those hurdles of beauty.
Yes, it's a, yeah.
You know, the path intruder and all.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah, I mean, if the thing was sticking up five inches or something, that'd be different, but it was, we had noticed.
That stuff, right, so it's just typical, typical.
Trees. Just don't plant trees.
But I think just, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, we can't. Provide a. Complete indemnification, because there's no way that Michelle could ever certify what that would. Be, so we just set it to the limits. Yeah.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, fire any mask?
Nothing very important.
Police?
Uh, under whole business, if you have a chance, does the board take a look at the annual report? Do you have, do you have any questions? If not, um. No questions. Um, then I would like to, uh. Well, I don't need a motion, but with your blessing, then, Mr. Luke, uh, publish that on our website. Any issues, comments concerned?
Yes.
Uh, new business, um, asking for motion to authorize the purchase of an unmarked vehicle so we can roll a current unmarked into the fleet. Uh, by Coglin Automotive, and it costs not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, also looking for motion to authorize the purchase of vehicle upfitting services from Par for both cars, so we will. Will uh, turn them marked in and finish up fitting it to like a mark control cruiser and the unmarked will get outfitted with certain equipment as well. And that's a cost not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars per book.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second. Vote yes.
And then at some point, uh, out of that, we will be selling uh, the car that we're trading in. Um, but we don't know what that cost is yet, uh, Par is actually working on selling that for us. And then, uh, I'm asking promotion to make an offer of employment to retired Columbus police officer David Griffins for the uh, position of reserve police officer.
I'll make that motion.
Second vote?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And then I'm looking for motion to make an offer of employment to Ed Montgomery, he's retired Columbus officer as well. Who was in financial crimes for the position of reserve officer to assist in criminal litigation on financial crimes.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second vote, yes.
And then lastly, uh, motion to make a conditional employment to Stephanie Schwab for the position of reserve officer, she is um. She will have to do the polygraph, uh, CBSA. Psychological, physical.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And it's all, thank you.
Ask for all the money. Pull out the bandaid.
Administrator.
Um. We have updated the language of the ethics policy, I think you all have seen that, and then Luke has created the. Contractor acknowledgement form. Asking the board if they have any input or. Ideas that might need to be added or. Changed on this contractor acknowledgement form. Not, we're going to roll this in this part of the policy. We go to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, limited home rule, rule of resolution. Easy for me to say, resolution to amend the um. Limited home, home rule citation. Uh, I think you guys all have that in your Dropbox. Um.
Do you want the resolution?
Do you have it there? There's any, any questions on that? We we. Had that up, the citation was updated by Pete's office, I think that was all sent to you guys for your review. Uh. We just need uh, get that signed off on, and then that will become. Our means of enforcing these various. Resolutions that we've come up here with, you know.
So do we need to request a resolution?
No, the resolution exists, you simply need to sign that and. That correct, the resolution is in place.
Yes, this is the many previous one.
Yeah.
Since it's amending a home rule resolution, it doesn't need to be by home, uh, rule of law, Pete?
Yes.
I guess.
Well, it does need to be rule of law. Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Let it clear before we move on, we we are voting on.
You're amending your limited home rule citation warrant, which you previously adopted via limited home rule resolution. In order to amend that citation, you need to amend. The imminent home rule. Resolutions that are adopted. Okay, twelve.
That's right, so do you, here's the. Do you want to read that off, then I can do the one copy?
Uh, I move that we. Um, I guess a dot.
Yes.
Um. Three townships have measured the other home rule resolution number oh four eight dash twelve.
Yeah.
I will call them.
Yeah.
Mr. English?
Yeah.
Mr. Robler?
Yes.
Mr. Tane?
Yeah.
Hey, the next one would be, we need a resolution to adopt the new fine schedule for the noise resolution. That is in your Dropbox, what it costs. Associated with those increased, the, the, that went from fifty to two fifty, then five hundred, then a thousand dollars.
Um, we're amending that one too.
Yes, so. You want that language?
Same thing.
Yeah.
I move that we uh, adopt, amend the. Limited home rule resolution, you have the one forty one dash thirteen. I have all those.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Reserve?
Yes.
Tane?
Yes.
Okay, we need a. Resolution to amend our transient vendor regulations and the changes in their word. To um. Not charge any tax exempt organization who is in good standing with the, the highest attorney general's office. So they would be able to go door to door and township without having to pay for vendors' licensing, they just have to register with the police department.
That's right.
Uh, I move that we need. Uh, amend the transient vendor regulation. I think it's number one oh seven oh eight, correct? Um, but we'll. Although.
Spanish?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tane?
Yes.
And our last item of new business, uh, in Luke's process of cleaning house, he has discovered multiple historic. Documents that belong to Perry Township and should be displayed. For our residents, if they want to see those, we're asking the board, we consider the purchase of. Display case or cases that we would like to put in the lobby here, where we can display some of the old records, um. Just documents, things that Luke has found back there that. Are sitting on a shelf and really just wasting away.
Can we look at before we uh, approve a display case, can we look at and?
No. If they're in the flight case, you can see them.
Okay.
You need to have white gloves and.
Laser securities. I forget, probably follow certain side of the, yeah, yeah, I mean, this is serious stuff here, folks.
I mean, some of this stuff is older than you all. Well, a long time ago, I have it somewhere, we were gonna throw out some copies, and 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 there were like a hundred fifty year old. Documents in there that look really cool, and I'm like. I don't like the stories, I don't know what we're gonna use them for, but. Well, Luke, can I, Luke, you want to kind of expand on what you found back there?
It's a pretty wide inventory of things, the oldest thing I found is a ledger book of um, transactions from nineteen hundred to nineteen ten. The oldest minute book we have back there starts in nineteen sixteen, I also have, um, it's kind of cool. It's the minutes for the Perry Washington Fire Board when Perry Township Fire and Washington. It was some, just some, something where the chair was kept on a notebook paper and a binder he got from a service supply shop, so it's uh, neat. Out there, I also have a a plaque. That has the key to the Wide World of Wendy's gifted to us from the Wendy's headquarters for.
Really?
Assisting in building the Wendy's that's across the street. The note is back there, but it's neat, it's cool.
So are you thinking it would be out there, or would it be somewhere in here, like uh, by the maps or?
Um, well, our lobby.
I don't know, have you consulted on location and?
We'll go, we'll go Mr. Rover first.
That's right.
Our lobby is now actually, um, we have a mechanism to unlock the door and let folks in, so we can actually use it like a lobby, so it would make sense to have.
True, yeah.
Something out there alongside our.
Let me track down the stuff that I have too, just because I think there's some cool stuff over there. Speaking of story stuff, my wife said, some chant, some TV thing on Sunday morning, it was. Local news show did like a ten minute thing on the Davis Cemetery.
Yes.
Ohio's two fifty.
Yeah.
What was that on?
Ohio two fifty.
Is it this weekend, right?
Uh, well, they were there on June fifteen. Yeah, seventeen.
She had no idea half this stuff existed about George Washington and then. Lady did the messages and they were really talking it up. She said it looked really nice on TV. I was kind of waiting to hear when that was gonna be out.
It's out.
Well, it's looked on their website, it was talking about preparing.
Yeah, or what's that? And the reason why I'm saying it's like.
I think it was NBC, but I'm not sure, but it was, it was one of the local Sunday morning or Saturday morning shows. It is, and it's one of the anchors that's been around for a while, I'm pretty sure it's.
It is, and it's one of the anchors that's been around for a while. I'm pretty sure it's.
Is it?
I don't know. She's been around a while though.
I'd say around, just a while. You had a thought.
What I was saying is, can. Put them on our website. Some, that, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that ledger book's health. It's, it's not in good shape. But there are a few that we can be able to put on the website, like the one I was showing guy before the meeting is a, um. Inventory from Frank County Engineer's Office of all the roads from nineteen eighty-five. That's in good condition and be scanned, but some of the others.
Just up in nineteen ten and.
Yeah, all the way back, it's too fragile.
That's a good idea, that we can get a, like, clip from that and whoever broadcasts that cemetery thing.
Throw about the cases themselves. Bringing it right back here.
So we have rice, they would call, and just plant the idea.
Now, we, we just, uh, really, it's about discussion. Is it, is it something we want to do? Do we want to display these items? I think it's part of something like that, you know, I mean, we found some that we framed. There's some things you can't frame probably because they can't, it was all apart or whatever. You would just, you're thinking like something like this big, kind of, that's like.
They're only a couple, two hundred dollars each, so.
Yeah, it just, and we, we really thought about. As you come into the lobby, moving those two chairs and just putting like a glass display case there. You could put old police badges in there. There's all kinds of cool things.
Have a box of, uh, run cards from the seventies that the radio room operators would give to the officers and they go out and run. Something like that.
Check out the one bullet from the desk.
I have mine on hold. I'm keeping my bullet every time.
So I think we're willing to take on whatever we're wearing is the way they support the idea.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Fiscal officer.
I have a few, thanks. Uh, passing for signature, the bankrupt conciliations from March through May, or your signature, your end signature?
Please report for your comment.
Yeah. You are within stabbing distance, so you know. Um. You forgot to mute that before I said that. Okay, uh, I would request a resolution authorizing and requesting levy F point five inside millimeter of Perry Township or District.
The mood.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Request a resolution authorizing the collection of four tax levies and suspending for one year the collection of three tax levies for fire protection.
I'll make that motion.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Request a resolution adopting the annual tax budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and authorizing the supplemental on same to the county budget commission.
To move.
Right.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And then finally, chief, a resolution authorizing the transfer of certain police funds for repayment to the township general fund. This will be done over a period of three years. With twenty twenty-five at two fifty-one, five sixty-five, sixty-eight, and the remaining two years, the same amount other than sixty-six thousand six.
So much again.
It's a total of seven hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars, um, and then it breaks out to two hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-five per year.
So moved. Second.
Vote yes.
Request a motion for approval of payroll and disbursements.
Make that motion.
Second.
Vote yes.
Yeah.
I think they want to do executive session, aren't they?
Yeah.
Hey, Luke, do you have the? You have the words for that?
Oh, did I group? Is it not on the agenda?
Would, would.
It's, uh, it's, uh, one twenty-one, twenty-two G one for, um, consideration. Uh, it's a compensation of a public employee.
Oh, there is. I worked and find that out. I move to go into executive session, um. Pursue it to ORC one two one dash fifteen G one to consider compensation on public employees completely by roll call vote.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.